Seven o'clock, I'd like to call the June 12th, 2018 Town of Greensland Council meeting to order. Hold on, please, sir.
Andy Schaefer.
Here.
Andy Key.
Here.
Tyson Matthews.
Here.
Trey Worthy.
Here.
Matt Brooker.
Here.
Guys, if you'd like to send down the patient, please, please. Hi, Chris Fodderman. We're so very grateful for this day and we're grateful for the opportunities that we have to serve and to help others. And my father, he actually blessed us that he can make the appropriate choices for the town and be able to keep this town in order, not mind its cost for me. He actually blessed us that he can help us do what's right and strive to help those in need. He actually blessed the men and women that served in our military that they can be strengthened and be able to fight for our freedom and we appreciate them. We love you and say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, isn't it?
Please, Tyson. Here. Please, some questions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Meeting has from May 22nd. Anybody have any changes or... If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve those. Sub moved.
Second.
And can you make the motion, Rich Carter, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Petitions and public input.
Just take a second. I'm calling on my code, I'm the candidate, running candidate for commissioner. I've been trying to get down here and introduce myself to the council for quite a while and unfortunately we've got a school bus and I get back home till six in the evening, which may be a little difficult to drive in a major community. But I just came down here to let everybody know so you can see me and I'll stick around for a while, if that's okay, and if someone has any questions after the meeting is over, I'd be willing to talk to you about it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm, most people probably know me, at least know of me, I'm Mr. Sheehan, CEO of the hospital. And I wanted to come here tonight to talk a little bit about what we're doing and really I'm talking as much as a community member as I am the CEO of a hospital. When I came here 10 years ago, 2008, I'll be honest, I didn't know if I was going to be here. I came here because there was an opportunity for advancement and I took it. I didn't know they were going to ask me to be a CEO and since that time, this has become my home. My kids have spent their entire school years here. My oldest is now in high school. And I know I've kind of been out of the public light for the most part. I'm kind of a shy, introverted kind of individual. Um, but I'm also a very passionate community member. And I think most of you would probably have to be living under a lock if you didn't know that... That's not you, sorry. Okay, sorry. I thought you meant where's that coming from? Anyhow, rural hospitals, rural healthcare systems are in danger. And a number of them are closing every day. They're being bought up by bigger systems and like I know I'm biased because I work there, but when people come from the outside and see what we have here, people call me and ask me, "How do you get doctors to live here in such a small town?" We have three providers that moved to town. When I come to town here, everybody told me, "You can't get doctors." We now have two doctors that are on staff for 10 years. We have three, or two doctors and a new practitioner that have been here for three or more. And you know, they've told me, "We didn't have a retail pharmacy." We added a retail pharmacy. We became the first in the state to do that. And I guess I'm saying this to say what we have here is something special and I know all of you want the best interest of the town as well. And if we don't have, if we don't recognize what we have, we're going to lose it. And some of you have probably seen that we've kind of put up a new sign and I've heard a lot of consternation that, "Why did we spend money on this? What are we doing for struggling?" Well, I'm talking with our board of directors and our community and our staff. This is our way of educating people. A lot of people that come to me and I get complaints on the daily basis, usually based on cost, because I'm sure most of you are aware, deductibles are through the roof now. So people that use us are paying out of pocket. It's painful and I see it in their faces. But people didn't know that we ran a retail pharmacy with that tax levy. They didn't know, and I'm talking to people like from our own county. County Health didn't realize we did retail pharmacy. Became the first, like I said, the first in the state to do that. If we don't start educating the people of what all we do, how can we go for a vote and ask them to increase the mill levy? Which is really the point of what we're doing. In November of 19, we're going to be going back to the voters and giving, I think, like I said, I believe this community needs healthcare. I believe it's essential for every business in town that we try to recruit and I'm going to do everything I can, even if it means I have to get up and start being more of a social butterfly, um, come out of my comfort zone a little bit. I'm going to try to do that. And I think Peter probably gave you an invitation. On June 21st, we're going to have a public event where we're going to start talking about this, why we named the campus that. Basically, it's just to get people talking. That it's not just the hospital your taxes go for. It's the EMS, it's the retail pharmacy, it's the family doctors in town, it's the respiratory, the physical therapy and all of those services. And I guess with that, I'll take any questions or, um, if not, I know you've got a busy agenda, so I don't take a lot of your time. I just wanted to make sure you have the upper that I invited you personally.
Maybe besides the invitation on 21st, which I regretfully, I will not be able to attend. I'll be in Farmington at a meeting.
Okay.
Are there other avenues that you're looking at to engage the public and provide some education to them about what you're doing, what you offer, what services you can give, things like that?
Well, this is the start because we're going to be going for a vote in November and we don't even know if that's going to be yet. We're going to be working on the budget this summer and over the last three years, we haven't been giving raises. We've been raising deductibles, co-pays, cutting retirement benefits, not replacing a doctor that left. We're now to where the cuts from here are people. And the people mean services. And every service we cut means more people driving out of town for things. So yes, I envision that when we start, when we know what we're going for, we'll probably, we did 23 town hall presentations for the new hospital. I would envision that we do something very similar with this and we'll, if we can get on the agenda, we're going to try to go with the town boards, every board that has a meeting and we're going to get out and try to get the word out. Because I think healthcare is absolutely integral to a community. And I know I speak biased on that, but I think most people probably agree that if you don't have healthcare here, this far removed, it's, it's a long ways to go. So...
Well, I would tender that we have a bunch of events coming up over the summer. Events that many of our residents will be attending, as well as people that maybe only come here once or twice a year, maybe come here on vacation and some people that have never been here before. I think those would be some great opportunities for you and your staff to, to get out and, you know, set up a booth, put, I don't know, something, you know, and just talk to some, talk to people. Everybody here in Greensley knows you.
Yeah.
And everybody knows how detrimental it is that the hospital is here. And, and it is a benefit, a great benefit, that a lot of people just don't even realize how great a benefit it is unless they've lived somewhere that there wasn't a hospital, which I have. So, uh, anything that I can do personally to help you out, I would be more than happy to help you out with that.
All right. Well, I appreciate that. We will definitely set up booths at like September Fest and we'll, we'll look for those opportunities to do that. So, all right, thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Is there anybody else I'd like to address aboard? Please take them here.
Well, just okay, so the tank is looking for volunteers right now for all next week, uh, Wednesday through Sunday. They need merchandisers, um, ushers, just different people because of the, uh, the summer concerts that are going to be there next week. They're also looking for a banquet or something where they can take people from down the hill up the hill. Um, Business of the Breakfast is this Thursday at 7:00 AM at Utah Gas. Uh, on the 20th of June, we have, um, the Greensley Chamber is doing our membership barbecue in the parking lot, so y'all come by for a hot dog and hamburger. But we also have two Utah film scouts coming to town. So we'll be taking them around town that morning and showing them some of the highlights and hopefully get a movie made here. Um, Hillclaw, for those of you who want to attend, that conference call will be next Friday. I'll send that out Monday, the conference number. Uh, CTO, I'm sorry, Colorado Tourism Office, I'm taking over their Instagram, July 6th through the 12th. So if there's anything specific that y'all would like us to focus on, certain, a certain picture, because that's what it's about, um, please send me your ideas, uh, by the end of next Friday. And Riley Colorado is looking for housing. So if anybody wants to rent a house, rent a room, we kind of need some help with that because they've expanded the race this year to include, uh, side-by-sides, not the ones we drive.
Do you have an idea how much they're looking for? How many houses?
Oh, no, I don't. He just sent me an email, "We're looking for housing now." Because the college is booked and the hotels are booked.
Right.
Furnish, well, they need some beds. Beds and towels, I would assume. Probably a coffee pot, too.
Go all hair and be a meal. Go all hair and be a meal.
Okay, yeah, I think that's it. Uh, works is, they've got a lady Kelly that's coming into town on Wednesdays and I have been and will continue taking her around to businesses to introduce her so people know where she's at in case they're looking for employment or an employee. I think that's it for tonight.
Okay. Sounds good. Thanks, man. Is there any changes in the agenda? Uh, no. Okay. No public hearing, committee and board meetings, um, on the 14th, Thursday at 6 o'clock at CNCC at the Johnson Building, same building that the cafeteria is at, the town maker's going to be joining with us and, um, did everybody get the three agenda items that they're looking, what we're talking about, going with? Peter?
I don't think I checked that out yet, everyone. I'll make sure to get that out tomorrow. There's four items on the, uh, created agenda.
So, just so you can think about it, um, a few that were talked about is economic development with better cities, um, asbestos is a big event that is kind of accounting wide, also with, you know, at some, at some point they're going to have to have a, a say in it. Um, mutual government entity support, which is going to be, um, I think what is basically talked about there is getting with the county and EK, um, bringing these folks in to do like chip seal or crack seal or engineering services that we all get on the same page and, and see if we can possibly get discounts for that. And then, um, one thing that we could want to talk about is, uh, updating, uh, IVC codes and looking towards that in the future and kind of keeping things consistent. So that's a few other things. And then, um, the CCITF, um, what is he, attorney? Is that what he is?
Sursa.
Yeah, Sursa.
Yes.
Sorry. Sursa, attorney.
He works for Sursa, he's contracted by Sursa, he's an independent, uh, practice.
So if you have questions on government roles and what's legal and what's not, it'd be a good time to bring those up. Uh, we had a public safety meeting yesterday. Um, we had a report from Chief Wilzik. As far as the, the majority of it, um, the biggest thing I saw that he's, they're planning on August 1st on having their policy rolled out. Um, they've been working hard on it, I think they have a couple of sections left in it. Trey and Tyson, where I live, do you guys want to add anything on, on that meeting?
I'm good. I don't, don't lose anything of note.
Okay.
For that, so...
Um, definitely, definitely, um, some stuff that he's working on to, to weather the police department. It was good to get his report. I'm planning on having that monthly meeting for now, um, to, you know, till the, till the storm, storm clears a little bit. So that'll be on the first, second Tuesday of, of each month.
Monday.
Second Monday of each month before the council meeting. As far as committee board meetings, that's all I have. Do we have any reports from council? Okay. Kelly, you want to go first?
Okay, we have all 18 gas services on Tanglewood. We've installed them from the house to the sidewalk. Asphalt mowing was done today. Uh, sidewalk curb and gutter will be removed. Now that the mowing is complete, um, Public Works will begin to install the water main and will come along behind them with gas main installation. If we do it this way, then Public Works won't have to deal with the five new crossings we're going to put in. They're already going to have to deal with the five existing gas crossings. So that will be just less that they have to deal with. Um, when we install these crossings, uh, those, four of the crossings will have two, three quarter inch lines and then one will just be a sleeve. Uh, we're going to install those in four inch gas pipe as a sleeve. I believe this will just, uh, provide protection, that pipe especially, when we're going to take down the road quite a way and there will be a lot of compaction. So I believe that will provide extra protection for those lines crossing the street. And then, like, our gas main installation is when we'll put our catheter tubes on, you know, as the gas main goes by. Uh, so we completed those, that part of the services on Tanglewood a while back and so we moved on. We were, you know, waiting for other things to be done. So some of you have probably seen on the doors, we've started to deliver our summer awareness, or some of our public awareness brochures. We're still in the process of getting those completed. I, some of you probably know this already, but the Public Utilities Commission requires us to have a public awareness program and we're required to go about that several methods. So one of them is a doormat hanger. Um, that's done usually about once a year. Another thing we do is we have a one-page informational sheet that goes out to postal customers at times. We have calendars usually available down there at, uh, Town Hall that have call-out one-one emergency information for the gas department on them. We've gone so far as to do, um, phone surveys because we have to have feedback, but those are just similar things that, you know, we do for the public awareness. We're out here inviting kindergarten class to visit the gas department. We do a specific mailing to the contractors in the area that, uh, excavate. And so those are several of the things that we do, but to keep in compliance and to, you know, help keep the public aware. Uh, locate requests are keeping us busy. And if you see it in the packet, it's a sheet that looks similar to this. Uh, the town's average gas usage as a whole continues to decline. I think there's several reasons for this. We've got model managers, we have an increase in vacant homes right now. I think people in general are being more careful about their, you know, utility usage because they, you know, have to pay the bill and I think there's just some people that are being more careful. So just kind of something that already come from the gas department is usage driven because we get the 30 cents per CCF, you know? And so just kind of to keep in mind that money will turn a tighter budget this year, but that, you know, so far, I don't know if you guys' paperwork goes through the bank, but i- if it doesn't, in May, we had a usage of 3,418 MDTs and our average is 4,549. If that information may not be on the sheets you have. So for this year, generally, month, we've even come close to the average, 10-year averages in March. So it's kind of something that we'll probably have to think about and continue to try to, I'll try to continue to be diligent with the budget. But so far this year, you know, we're looking at probably a linear income wise. So, so any questions?
I got a quick question for you, Kelly.
Sure.
On your public awareness stuff.
Yes.
Are you trying, is there, are you struggling to find things to do to kind of keep within compliance on that?
We really struggle to find ways to get it out there. We struggle a little bit with the response, you know, with the feedback that we're required to have.
Do you know Linda Schroeder does not eat water?
What? I'm sorry.
Do you know Linda Schroeder does not eat water?
No, I don't.
She is, um, spokesman or chairperson or whatever for the Western Slope Pipeline Damage Prevention Council. She has some programs available, especially one that's, uh, intended to go into the school and with some interaction, graphic boards and things like that, teach your kids about, you know, what's under the ground and call them before you dig and things like that. If you would be interested in that, I can get you her contact.
Sure. I mean, we'll take whatever we can get and maybe she has some ideas that we haven't, you know, tried, so.
Okay.
No problem.
I'll take care of that.
Anything else?
Thanks, Kelly.
Mr. Reed, the infamous legal counsel down in the utilities department. Um, I just want to start probably with doing some recaps on our grant status. The water treatment plant, we're pretty well wrapping that all up. Deadline around the end of June. Uh, we shouldn't be spending any more money. Uh, we're pretty well down to just one warranty item and that's on the sewage collector. Uh, we'll be having some bids, uh, from, for Wesco. They've asked if we could procure some bids and then they would pay for them, whoever they decide on. Uh, we still got a little bit of cosmetic in the plant to do. It's going to take a while, um, with all the other projects and things that we're working on. We're just, as need faces or time gives, we'll get in there and keep working on the cosmetics. Um, that's pretty well. Little bit of landscaping in the front, kind of waiting to see what transpires, what quote we planted and stuff out there first, uh, before we move forward and do anything else there. Um, any questions in regards to the water treatment plant?
I'm seeing something in your notes about your SCADA system having difficulties or some problems that haven't been resolved or...
We are working on, we have some anomalies every once in a while where we experience glitches. Um, we believe that some of these glitches may be because we have a older type of electrical system integrated with a newer type of CPU SCADA system. So the integration of these two systems sometimes creates those glitches. The glitch that we experienced last time was we had the computer system shut down, but the system was still protected under the CPU, which is also basically the control program over the whole entire system, automated system. Our problem was is we weren't able to trend our data for our compliance. So one of the things that we can do to resolve this issue is we're going to put what we call a watchdog in. So if the computer fails, we will outroute to a different call-out system, which will notify us if any 15-minute period lapses without a trending data set, then we'll be notified to respond to the watch. So that's, we're hoping this will...
You say this is an intermittent problem or is it, is it something that's being worked out or...
Yes, it will be worked out.
I mean, I know that's a backup plan, but I mean, the solution would be to resolve the problem, right? So, I mean, I was just, I was just wondering if there...
We could expedite a great deal of money trying to isolate that particular problem. It's a pretty complicated integrated system that, you probably know the Chevron has them too.
Yeah.
So you know how that could be sometimes and you got these little glitches in there. Hopefully that will resolve that issue.
I guess my biggest question is, you know, what is our water supply? Uh, you know, is there any danger of it being, uh, interrupted with some major problems or just, just, uh, no regulatory standpoint for, for data collection?
No. Yeah, just for data collection. The operation of the facility, we still have capability going in and going into hand mode. When we went with the backup system also is an old HOA, just turn everything on in hand and the problem is we have to stay there and do our own monitoring and sampling and, but it's part of our job.
Just want to make sure water comes out when our, when the town deposits.
Yeah, so speaking of that, um, I've addressed it with Peter a little bit, um, the town under its emergency action preparedness plan in case we have a water shortage this year. It's kind of a, it doesn't have an actual implementation program that sets up the guidelines that the town of Greensley will do. So we will be drafting execution plan if, if we have to go into any type of water restrictions. And that'll be approved by town council and reviewed by Peter before we submit that to you guys. And then we'll submit it to you for approval for pending action. If need be, I'm hoping that we can survive this. Okay? Right now, the National Water Service says this area is in a ma- a moderate drought condition. So keep our fingers crossed, do some rain dances, maybe we'll be okay. Any other questions? The recap on the wastewater treatment plant, the final item is just a few odds and ends that we've got on the clarity building. Uh, the panels for the interior ceiling and so we can get the insulation blown in, um, that's scheduled to be at the end of this month. That, once that's done, then Prater can set the heater, uh, and we'll see what we call the fans and the rest of the lights and that'll pretty well take care of what we've got with Other items that we're working on too is we completed our ground storage reservoir inspection, our biannual, which is pretty in-depth where we go through all our storage tanks and we pretty much check everything from top to bottom and didn't have any problems or any issues at this time. We're working extensively too in the Batfield Cross Connection Program. With all the other things going on, Mike, he's down, he's focused, he's more on trying to get what we surveyed last year in compliance for this year. So he's, he's working on that. He has no doubts in his mind that he will complete it. Um, other than that, we're working on jetting the main sewer lines throughout the town. We've pretty well finished up the, the problem areas that we have every year. And now we'll be focusing on trying to do certain sections. Our goal this year is to complete one-third of the complete town systems and one-third year, every year after is our, our goal for, for jetting. So the use of our backup, it's paying off for itself pretty good. Keeps us pretty busy and it's been a good machine so far.
Good to hear.
Okay. And that, any questions?
Questions for Don? Thanks, Don.
Thank you.
Peter, we received your report the other day and I think that was great. I think it was well taken and good record for us tonight.
Now, if there's any questions on that, uh, please let me know.
So, short report tonight to...
So, short report tonight, building department draft agreement. Talked with Jeff Racker this, a few days ago. He mentioned that they're still, the county's still working on the draft, still working on for the Mesa County format for the IGA between, between the county and the town of Rangel. So, that's still in progress, haven't seen anything yet. Tanglewood Project and Kelly Tuck. About a number of things on Monday, Jeff will be starting with trenching and placing the water line in the Tanglewood Project tomorrow. They're going to, actually Thursday, they're going to dig down and tie in the diversion off of the existing pipe, put a valve in there and a kick block and get it ready for the tie-in with the new, the new pipe. And then Monday, they'll start trenching and put the new pipe in. We received the draft copy of the Calo CPA audit. I'm going through that right now, so you'll see that Lisa, the final next meeting.
I'll send out the draft. I should just model it in the...
Next week, I'm going to be at CML Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday and Friday, half of Friday for that meeting and I'll probably leave early, early Wednesday morning. Looking to schedule the next work session. Andy, do we want to talk about that tonight for the 28th?
Yeah.
Okay. We have obviously a work session this Thursday and looking two weeks from then, is it 28 on the, yeah, I think it's on a Thursday. So, we've got some topics that we need to address from the last work session that we've been working on. Academy and I think they're going to take a little time in preparation for the budget as we get closer to that. So, we have another vacancy at White River Village. It makes the third one this year. Two of the units that have been vacated were long occupancy and they require a fair amount of improvements to get them ready for the next, for the next tenant. So, they're working on that. Also got a contract from the predation control guys with USDA, talked to David Moreno. Remember the presentation, Sid and those guys came and provided. So, I talked with David today and I talked with Sid Wood. They're actually going to sign their contract with accounting any time down. I think on July 1st, that contract will take effect. So, based on the price that was quoted to us, it's probably going to pay off if we just wait till the county gets their contract signed for the prairie dog control in several areas around town because we can probably cut a better deal with the county, with the county contract and assuming they'll cover part of our cost on that, which is I think the discussion we had a couple of months ago. Get sales tax report in this, this past week. Congratulations. We did $75,000 on this last sales tax report, which we haven't seen that for a few years. We had some backdated sales tax numbers come in, but nonetheless, it was a, it was a good number to see and about $30,000 above the previous month's report, so.
Would that have been for Mace? Or what, I guess not May, probably April. That was the...
We're usually two months ahead of years.
Yeah, that was the April report.
It's because of the field board.
What's that?
It's because of the field board.
We still need some pictures of that to surface.
There was one big one in there.
Oh, she's still...
Andy, I think that Public Safety Committee meeting each month is the Monday before the first meeting each month.
Monday before the first council meeting?
Yeah. So, it'll be that second month, generally the second Monday or the, the Monday before the second Tuesday of each month.
Okay.
My grandfather's mother's niece.
Killing me small.
Okay. Anyway, any questions about any, any of the projects going around town, code enforcement?
So, I guess I would like to say something because I think, I think you guys put a good effort into rolling around and talking to people about the Tanglewood Project plus having another meeting in the, at Town Hall for that. And I know that we all as councilmen have broad shoulders, but I can see it happening and is, is the complaints going to come? And so, I think it should be well noted that the town did go out and try to give a public information on it and so we did put a good effort out to do that. It's not like we're going to solve everything, but it is going to be an inconvenience for a little while. And I think that we just need to all know that that's what happens so that when the complaints do come in, you know, we did try hard to get there with people.
And we continue, Andy, we also continue to post for each major event, like the milling project, we posted in advance so the residents knew they had to have their vehicles off the streets and otherwise they'd get milled up. Just kidding.
How do y'all, do you go door to door or how does it actually?
Usually do a door hanger with a tight description of what's going to happen and when it's going to happen. Yeah. But we have that public meeting down here for the residents of Tanglewood. That was about a month ago.
Yeah, we have one person come in, so that's, that's what I'm saying as we, we tried.
Yeah, you did what you had to do. I mean, that's the cost of progress, right? You're going to be inconvenienced from time to time.
Yeah, it's going to get worse before it gets better. And we're going to try and keep everything open, but there'll be inconveniences.
Peter, I, so the code enforcement, you can see that it's up quite a bit right now and just to let you guys know, I had a guy that was actually very upset with, with some of the things that happened with, you know, with this weed problem and there was a lot of things that go along with it. But I really think that he was wanting me to try to act on, on behalf of the council on something that was going on. But a kudos to Janet, she did very well on, you know, finally get, after we finally got the guy that was having the problem. Soon as we got the problem to her, she was able to explain it very well. And I don't think through the whole chain of command that the town has stepping over that whole thing rather than get her involved and getting, getting the problem resolved, that the guy was happy once that was done. So, you know, kudos to her and, you know, with all the, with all the code violations, it's not any different than anybody else. I mean, I've got a guy across from my house, it's got four-foot tall weeds in the front yards and I bite my lip to, to take care of it, but she's doing well. I'm just saying that and our, and our chain of command, I think will work well for us if we keep, keep going through it, so.
Well, one thing that they need to stress is the fire hazard that it presents, you know, for the, for the community because when you have tall weeds, especially right now, you know, that's, it can be significant.
That's true.
If we keep everything mowed and trimmed and low, it lessens the, the impact of a, of a fire in any area, so.
And I think that she does that, it's just the, you know, people...
My leaders.
Everybody has a different thought on how things should go. Sorry. Good for her.
Yeah, she's doing a nice job.
But I mean, it's not just the aesthetic, it's the, it's the safety, you know, that goes along with it, you know, it's, it's not just because it's not pervy, it's, it's dangerous for the community.
Yeah. Little business, does anybody else have any questions for Peter?
I'd like to say one other thing about the, Janet's been doing a good job on that pool memorial as well. I've seen her down there several days working on that, so it's looking nice.
Should be done, well, she said she'll be done by the end of the month, but I'd give her another week or two. She doesn't know what she's going to get pulled off, I do.
Peter, I just, that reminded me, when we do finish that, let's get a picture of it and send it to the agency when they, so they can see it too, so they can see the completed project of approved, please.
Any other questions for Peter?
Old business, Peter, I think you covered it. New business. I made discussion action to approve the April 2018 check register. Motion to approve the April 2018 check register. Second. Motion's been made by Andy Key, second by Tyson. All those in favor? All of them opposed. Motion carries. Discussion and action to forward the included letter of support regarding finding environmental impact statement as stated by Interior Secretary Ryan Zink's office as it pertains to allowing infits, American Oil, hang on. Order EQ to exceed tunnel lines across building into multiple locations for the purpose of carrying natural gas, electricity, water and product.
Andy pointed out earlier that there's a mistake between the person it's addressed to and the dear Mr. Torres, so we'll correct that before the final goes out.
And that property ends up, I know we had discussion on it last time, but their property ends up being out there real close to the Colorado Utah line is a big area that they're doing in. I think the corridor actually follows the evacuation creek in, in Utah. That's where, that's where their map, that's where Infits map says it is. So, once again, the best route to get through back to Rangel is going to be through Park Canyon.
I'd agree with you there, sir. You got to get that banana highway, it's done, and then you can go.
Park Canyon.
Do I get support out there?
Oh, they had to make a motion to approve the letter of support regarding finding environmental impact statement with the proposed amendment.
Second.
Correction, I should say. Motion by Andy Key, second by Rich Garner. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I have seen discussion action to approve, to approve resolution 2018-05 supporting the 2004 Colorado Wolf Management working group recommendations for Wolf Management in Colorado and imposing the reintroduction of wolves into Colorado.
There is also two corrections that need to be made on this document. This is a boilerplate that was given to us from AGNC and we missed a couple of changes in there, so we'll get that corrected as well.
I'll make that motion with the corrections.
Motion by Tyson, second by Rich. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I have the discussion action to support agency's application to the Economic Development Administration for designation of Northwest Colorado and Rio Blanco County as an economic development district. Andy?
Basically, they've been working on this for a year and a half, close, and they're trying to be kind of an economic development district. It opens up opportunities with federal government through the ED, you can get a lot more access to gradients and stuff like that and part of the process is becoming approved to become a district and they base it on a lot of statistics and what's, right now, they're working on the, basically the proposal, they would say, this is why we need to be an economic development district and they'll, they'll submit that and ask for approval and we're basically asking to write a letter of support, in support of the economic development district.
Yeah. We were talking earlier about the position that's being allocated for this and it says, Bonnie's response says that she expects 100% funding for the position to come through the federal, no, the federal funding. And, and the position then would preside over the economic development district and the enterprise zone in the best case scenario, according to her. So, and, and then they talk about another individual board that's being appointed. Is that from the members, the current members of the AGNC?
Yes. So, that would be like, I don't speak too incorrectly here, but I'm pretty sure Caitlin would be on that list and I think Moffett County's ED person's on that list as well as Garfield's. So, they are part of the boards plus the, I don't, I can't tell you the full, what the full makeup will be, that'll be set later on as far as I know.
So, any, as far as supporting it, will we, because they're going to have a person as, that will be the administrator, will the town incur any costs or the, okay, so it will all be federally funded?
Yep.
Or as far as, will it all be federally funded?
Once they, because right now, they'll get the, the grant approval that will help create the person that does that. And then once they get that, they'll complete the process of applying for becoming an economic development district. So, we don't have any, other than what we're paying the agency, we don't have any, occur any fees.
Is there negative, any negative impact to the community being part of this? I mean, I remember we had a discussion, a lady that was in there, I don't know if it was about this particular one, but, you know, it's like when you are designated, then there's certain criteria that you have to meet to...
So, the way you look at it, historical society, the, that, but nothing... Nothing has come up at this point that, that they've said, hey, be worried about this. It's pretty much, pretty much, like, for instance, I'll tell you that, like, Delta, Montreal, is that one of them? I can't tell you their district name, I lost my head, I don't remember, but they got into it and they basically found a big broadband project, well, not all, a large portion of their broadband project through this. And we don't even have access to it because we don't exist, we don't exist in the district at this point, so, you know, Rio Blanco, Moffett, Garfield, those are the big ones that are currently in one.
Seems like we're doing money on the table by not being a part of it.
Exactly. And, I mean, any, any chance we can get to get federal dollars here is, is less in my opinion.
Any other questions?
I understand the motion.
I'll make his motion, just a second.
Motion made by Rich, second by Tyson to submit a letter of support to AGNC for the economic development district has been made. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion action to approve, approve the renewal of a 30-year grant of a right-of-way for the natural gas pipeline adjacent to Highway 64 from Darius Avenue to Gilhamburgh and the natural gas pipeline for the Mesa subdivision and Colorado Northwestern Community College, COC 40655.
It will be changed in the final documentation, but actually instead of from Darius, it's more like from Highway 139 to Gilhamburgh. So, that doesn't, I mean, if that's giving people the impression that BLM property, you know, is cleared into Darius, it's not. So, what we did, I've done with 30 years ago, we signed up this similar type of agreement. It's set to expire in December of this year. And we have gas line winding the right-of-way on this, this BLM property and the right-of-way of Highway 64. And we've spoken to Stacy Burke from the BLM and I don't think there's any way that we can be exempt from entering this type of agreement because we're an enterprise, we make money with the product that is transported through the pipeline. So, I believe that we, it's in our best interest to sign another agreement that will go on for another 30 years. You guys have the paperwork, I believe, for the $440 for monitoring fee and $1,150.30 for the 30-year right-of-way agreement fee. So, that would cover... So, that would cover, uh, what, around a couple thousand dollars would cover all the fees for 30 years. And I suggest we just pay it and be done with it instead of dragging it out and making payments. And we could do so, but I can pay it out of the, um, gas materials fund. There's money there to pay it, so. And like I said, I don't think we really have much of a choice. You know, we don't enter this agreement and I guess they can say, well, then get your pipeline out of the right-of-way. And the river isn't anywhere for it to go but there, so. That would be an awful lot of freedom, so I recommend we just go ahead, sign the agreement, pay the fees, sign, and sign the agreement and be done with it. Any questions?
I agree.
With the, uh, the downturn in the, uh, funds that, that the gas companies see, do you need assistance with that? Or you, you think, or can you, can the gas company afford that? Or do they need assistance from their board?
Not at that point.
At that point, yeah?
No. I, I, this year it looks like it's going to be a lean year, but no, there, there is enough, there's budgeted, enough money budgeted in our, our gas materials and expense. Most of our gas materials, real infrastructure and expenses going to come out of the capital project on Tanglewood, so we will not have a lot of monies, of monies coming out of there. You know, and that, those are monies that can kind of be controlled, you know? If you don't have a lot of construction going on and a lot of things to purchase, then, you know, you're not, you know that that fund's going to be there and have money in it. So, that, that's not an issue right now. But we do need to probably, like I said, just take care of this for another 30 years and be done with it.
Yep. I, uh, I mean, I agree that, uh, it's not an option, really.
No, I don't see any other option.
And then, you know, whatever it takes to, if they need assistance, we need their assist.
Are, are you trying to say that this isn't going to fight the government one? 30-year term on 15,000, it's not that big.
Well, yeah, after 14, 15, monitoring fees included in that. I mean, that's additional, but yes, you're right, if, to be done with it for another 30 years. And by that point, there'll probably be somebody else besides me handling that, so.
Well, I used to be here, right?
I'm proud of me in the paper as well. The light shows I couldn't find it 10 years ago.
Sure, you all might have been looking at me right there.
Maybe, almost.
Any other questions for Carrie on that?
Uh, I'll just, did you notice this coming down the pipeline or did it...
Okay, but we didn't really know about it till, I've been working on this since February 2016. Did all the paperwork and it has taken this long for them to get us, uh, contract back? So, we really weren't aware of it until...
So...
Our pipeline right away, Andy, ordered like, or the same way?
Oh, no, no, no.
There had been an agreement 30 years ago. We just didn't...
I, I was just curious, 'cause like, couple, like, two years ago, a year and a half ago, we, we did, what did we have to do to be in agreement with the gas department? Or was it...
No, it was the water department.
Water department?
A lot of land and the two, uh, sedimentation ponds set up.
Okay.
Um...
So...
There was something with the state land board, the border station? Maybe, you might have been thinking that. Yeah, we have to pay for that too, though. But that's the state land board.
It's really not that big of a deal, 1500 or anything. I just am like, trying to think how we could better work with them to where it's not like a, hey, you, it's there 30 years, is that, like, deal with this?
On the face of it, it's like, kind of, we're paying them to do nothing, really. I mean...
That's how the government works.
All, all the options aren't very attractive, so I guess that's what we do. But, like, I, I know, it's kind of like, wow, jeez, I'm getting this money for no reason, really. But, like I said, they, they could just say to, get your pipeline out, so.
It's hard to track stuff 30 years down the road too, so. I'll go ahead and make motions if that's already done. So, wait a minute. Give me a second.
For you?
Sure.
I made the motion, Andy seconded it. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I have the discussion action to approve the, oh, wait, I'm sorry. Informational items, is there any question on the informational items? Uh, there's a lot of good stuff that went on up at the trap club. Susan had a real nice thank-you letter.
Awesome, 'cause you're the ones that do have to ask there. I should have.
Any other questions on the informational items? Okay. What about vacancies for the ODA, ODC board?
Have that got filled out? Still open?
I was, I know.
We're gonna, we're gonna work on that. They haven't paid much attention to that vacancy.
I'm sorry?
Actually, we haven't paid much attention to that vacancy. We're gonna have to work on that.
What about the vacancy for the planning zone?
Same time? We're gonna find the person that's gonna do both.
Perfect.
Skittle announcements are in 17.
You have a recommendation?
Does anybody, well, does anybody have a recommendation? Have you guys got a recommendation?
Ford vacancy.
Ford vacancies.
Who was, uh, on the, uh, planning zone? I know I was on that board. Uh, were there some other persons that were, uh, recommended at the time? Maybe we could revisit.
There was another Chevron employee?
Yes, Chad Harris.
Is that who it was?
Yes.
Yeah, I could see.
And he's, uh, he's got a lot of electrical, skate of experience.
Do you have his, I don't know that I have his contact info.
I do, yeah. I have it, if you want it.
Yeah, maybe we could do that, if, if you're...
Anything else? Adjourned at 7:56.